Okay, I would like to call the August 14th, 2017 Shakopee School Board Business Meeting to Order. Uh, Sarah, would you please call the room?
Sure. Byron.
Yes ma'am.
Alan, here.
Here.
Us.
Yes.
Romansky, here.
Tucker, here.
And Swansea.
Good evening. Item number two, we are Shakopee Schools' good news items. We have one, uh, excellent news item tonight. Uh, is Dr. Kevin Bierken in the room?
He is.
Dr. Bierken, would you mind?
He just escaped from me.
I know, he did. So, uh, as most of you know, uh, Dr. Bierken, back on Friday, June 30th, uh, was knighted, Acting Interim Superintendent, um, for Shakopee Public Schools. And you have been nothing short of a lifesaver, helping us, uh, at a time where we needed some solid leadership the most. And from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you for everything that you've contributed over the last thirty-nine or so days. Uh, you have been an inspiration, you've been an incredibly strong leader when we needed leadership the most, so, thank you very much. Very, very much. Hold on, hold on. Wow, it went too fast, sir. Uh, this is from our, from our school board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Uh, and even though this is on the agenda, there's a new person sitting, uh, to my immediate left, and I would like to be the first to introduce, uh, our newest interim superintendent, Gary Anger. This is his first official meeting, he started with us on August 9th, so Gary, welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, serving our school community, uh, my fourth day in today, and it's been an absolute pleasure. We've got plenty of work to do, but it's all gonna be done with a smile on our face and, uh, very clean windows, as we say, and complete transparency, so our public knows exactly what's going on. So, thank you very much, it's an honor to be a part of the Shakopee Schools.
Excellent.
Go ahead.
All right. Item number three, and that is the consideration of the agenda as presented, and there are no additions, correct?
Right, no.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
helpful.
Barry?
Second.
Second, Matt, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consent items. I will entertain a motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Reg, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we're gonna jump to, actually, item six, old business action items, and we're gonna start with 6.1, and I would like to invite up, um, our Executive Principal Jeff Felicki and Stuart Lang, our ninth grade academy principal, to introduce our newest Shakopee Academy Champion.
That's right, very excited, thanks for having us. In a little bit, we're gonna talk a little bit more about the academies and, and give the board an update of what we've been working on, uh, last school year, this summer, but before we do that, um, we have a wonderful, uh, opportunity here to recognize, uh, some of our business partners. When you think of the academy model, one of the most crucial elements for it to be successful is to have a high level of community engagement. And in the year that I've been here in Shakopee, it is abundantly clear that we live in a community that, uh, is, is just that. We've got wonderful business partners who are eager to, want to, to partner with the school district, to really provide our students with, when we talk about authentic instruction, those real life opportunities, where I'm in a classroom, and what I'm learning in the classroom, how can I make a connection to that in the real world? And we are just beyond excited to have representatives from Apple Autos join us. Guys, why don't you come on up here? Stuart and I, we've, we've, we've sat down, we've, we've had multiple meetings with Apple Autos, and they have agreed to join us in being one of our academy champions, more specifically with the Freshman Academy. And what that means, when, when Apple Autos is coming onboard to be a, an academy champion, basically what they're saying is that, you know what? We are, we're, we're committed to what, uh, to what we're doing at the high school, and that, that's in the form of time, treasure, and talent. And you think of all of the facets of Apple Autos, from the work that's done on the sales floor, to the work that is done, uh, you know, the, the technical end of it, working the vehicles, they really represent a lot of different areas that the, the academies represent. So what not, what, I can't think of a better match than to partner specifically with Stuart and the Freshman Academy, so that as we get rolling, and whether it is in the freshman seminar class, or in the core classes, what we're gonna do, starting now and into this coming school year, is we are going to work together to create those opportunities for our students, uh, that is really gonna make, uh, the things that they experience day in and day out, uh, come to life. And I can't thank you guys enough for partnering with us, I'm super excited to have you.
Thank you, we're glad.
All right. I'm so here to present you. And that's, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right, now we're gonna move on to, uh, actually, we're gonna go up, back up to item five, old business discussion items. And Jeff, if you wanna go ahead and-
That's right, just sit down.
-keep the show rolling, um, Jeff is going to give us, I'm, I'm gonna let you tell us what you're gonna-
I'll just, I'll just keep right on going. Uh, so tonight, we're unfortunate enough to have with me, uh, members of my high school team, I've got Scott Dorn, and Sarah Jordan, and Stuart Lang, current assistant principals, um, at the high school, and a little bit, I'm gonna have them, uh, come up here, we've got a slide presentation, we're gonna go through some of the new and exciting spaces here at the high school. But to kinda get us warmed up for that, um, you know, knowing that I was gonna come here to present, and I really thinking about, just, just personally, the whirlwind of experiences that I've had personally, coming from another school district, and it's been a year and a month, and I can remember walking into this very room at a, at a master planning session, just feeling like everything is, phew, right, right over my head, and, and when I look back at the amount of work that our teachers have put in, uh, developing the curriculum, uh, the business partners coming into our schools, into the district office here, and really sitting down and working arm-in-arm with our teachers on, how can we take the great, wonderful things that we're currently doing in Shakopee, the great Minnesota education, but then take it a step further by really getting them a feel to experience what life is going to look like for them after high school, and only after school, and teaching and learning has been, has been a huge role, and that has really supported me, uh, in, in really getting a crash course in all of this, and, and now having the opportunity to take the keys with this. It's, it's been, um, you know, I, I wrote a, a article the other day, it has definitely been a highlight of my career. So to give you an update of where we're at right now, one of the last things that we did as a building before everyone took off for the summer, is we got our teachers together, and we were able to identify what the academy teams are going to look like. So, when you think of a, of a team model, what we, what we're working to create is to create an environment, when we talk about, all the things we've talked about, the, the personalized learning, making big feel small, well, we're doing that in an environment where we can have teachers that are wrapped around a smaller group of students, where they can develop relationships, where they can get to know them, and, uh, and, and really the idea of, of what it means to, to work in, in a team setting. So a lot of our work that we're going to do with our teachers, springboarding into the school year and throughout, is really spending a lot of time, um, talking about authentic instruction, and, and what does that look like in a classroom setting on a day-in and day-out basis. So we're really excited about that. One of the other items that I'm extremely excited about, and they're all sitting here in front of me, is we have an ambassador, a student ambassador program. And we have, they're, they're not all here today, but we do have, uh, some representatives of our inaugural Academies of Shakopee Ambassador Program, and really, what, what these students represent is student leadership. One of the things I've always said, when I was interviewing for this position, is how leadership matters. Leadership matters at, uh, a teacher level, uh, the principal level, but really importantly at a student level. And what these students are going, what, what they're learning, and what they're gonna continue to learn, is everything that there is about, uh, everything about academies. So, I'm gonna let them speak, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and speak here in a little bit, but what we've really been working on with them is, uh, really being able to tell that story from the student lens, from the student perspective, of, of what, uh, the academy model means for them. And I think back to when I was learning about the academy model, you know, I met a lot of really great adults along the way, but what really resonated with me, and what really sticks in my mind, is really the, the individual conversations that I had with the students who were able to experience this. And so, what these young men and women are going to do, and they're doing this here tonight, is to really provide that vital student lens of what this work means to me, how it impacts me, and, and, uh, you know, we're gonna have a lot of, uh, a lot of interested parties in what we're gonna be doing, and they're gonna be the ones, they're, they're gonna do informational sessions, they're gonna join me during this school year, uh, they're gonna do, uh, tours, when people come in and, and want to learn about it, they're gonna be providing the leadership on the student end of things, uh, to really, to really tell our story, is a good way to put it. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and then we're gonna open the floor to them, just let them speak a little bit about what their experience has been like to this point.
Uh, I'm Bryce Jankie, and something I'm excited about for the academies is just how, like they said before with Apple Autos, is how it connects students to the other communities around the area, and we can just, it prepares ourselves for the real world, and it just makes the transition from high school to college to jobs a whole lot easier, and it's an opportunity that not many, many have, but I think we really need to just take advantage of these opportunities. Bryce?
My name is Ruby, and, um, I know something that I'm really, really excited for is, for the students to finally get their voice heard, you know, they say they want this, and the academies are ready to provide this for us. We want courses that are gonna prepare us for life, not just for high school, and not just for finals, we want something that's gonna prepare us for the rest of our lives.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bryn. Um, the academies are gonna, um, provide a lot of new opportunities that we normally wouldn't have, like job shadowing, and like getting connected with our actual futures. So I think that that's a really great thing, and it's really important that the academies are doing that.
I'm Imani Joshi, and I've been really excited about the academies because, for the first time in a long time, it's felt like the students are kind of able to drive the project and which way it goes. We get to have direct input, and that's not something that a lot of school districts are able to benefit from, and I think it's gonna be a really big benefit to the academies as a whole, because we're setting up something that is going to go on for years and years. So just because we're the first ones doesn't mean that it's the only ones, we're able to set kind of a legacy, so it's really cool.
Hi, my name is Aaron Chow, and, you know, going into this as, you know, knowing literally nothing about the academies program, and learning everything from what the academies are, what our goals are, and, you know, everything else, I really like how, you know, as everyone else said, how the students can take control of what they want to do with their future, and it gives us a little more of an insight of what, like, the majors off to college and such.
Hi, my name's Akil, and something I'm excited about for the academies is that, I guess, it gives big schools a small school feel, and it really prepares us for college. I mean, it lets us explore, like, all these different types of majors, and like, I guess, categories that are kind of jobs that we wanna go to, and if we don't like something, then we can go to something different, I guess.
Thank you.
So, since we have them here, are there any, and I, I prepared the course, there could be some questions.
I got one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna poll you, just spur of the moment, what academy are you leaning towards individually? Just, go down the line.
I'm thinking about engineering and manufacturing right now.
I'm thinking about healthcare and health services, um, probably arts and communication. Probably towards the business and communications side, but I mean, I'm still experimenting.
I'm really looking forward to, I mean, to like the arts and communications with my artistic side.
Healthcare and health services.
So, next.
Very cool.
Yep.
And really, with, with this group here, you know, it is, you know, whenever you're the first anything, um, you know, I really, I really need to give all of them a lot of credit, because if you, if you fast forward to five, ten years down the road when we're doing this, really, the way it'll be set up is we'll have ambassadors for each of the academies. So, um, take business and entrepreneurship, for example, you know, if we're going, we'd have a couple that could really speak everything inside out, business and entrepreneurship, well, because we are still in that implementation and moving towards, we really ask them to be able to speak and to learn about all of the academies, all seven of them. And so, you know, I really need to give them a lot of credit for, you know, A, stepping up, wanting to, to be a part of this. We had, when, oh heck, when we did this back in February, I wanna say, you know, just the initial application, we probably had about fifty students who were interested in doing this, and we put them through a tough vetting process to get to where we're at. But what our goal is, is these, these are students who will be seniors, and so our plan is, Ms. Tabio, she couldn't be here tonight, but she is the advisor working with them, is we intend to grow this, so that now we're getting into, you know, the kids who are coming in this year are sophomores, and are gonna have tours, our, the plan is to eventually get this up to the point where I could really picture us having, I don't know, anywhere between twenty-five and thirty ambassadors in each of the, in each of the different areas. And, uh, I know we took some time, uh, in June, we were over here, and we were doing, we were just having dialogue with them about, you know, when you are in a, like, like tonight, when you're in a room with a lot of adults, what it, what it, what does it look like? What does it mean to have adult interaction? Or if you're gonna be leading a tour, and you need to, you know, fill in time and have discussions, you know, what, what is that like? And so they're really learning some very important real-life skills. We didn't practice walking backwards, didn't we? Right? So, all, all of those things that, you know, you, you think about when you, whether you're going into college or going straight into the workforce, um, are just really important skills. And so, um, I've just had a great time working with these guys, and, and look forward to having them be on this, this journey with us, so.
This is just a small portion of, well, not a small portion, but how many total ambassadors do we have right now? You know, there's some that couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, you ten. Yeah, ten right now.
Ten right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Very cool.
All right. That portion, what we're gonna do now, and if, as, we're gonna go through, I thought a good way to really pass a more dialogue is, what we wanna do is, we've got a PowerPoint presentation, I know some of you may have seen it, others have not, uh, to give the community an, an update on the, uh, the expansion progress at the high school, and it's really cool, because some of those renderings that were started, and so you can't tell the difference between what's an architectural rendering and what is the real thing. So I'm gonna invite the assistant principals to come up, and we're gonna, we're gonna go through, Scott has been, when it comes to, when it comes to construction, he's kind of been our, our construction liaison in the building, so I told him for this portion of it, he gets to lead the way, and then I told the ambassadors too, I said, if you see something that really kinda triggers a question, or a, something exciting, or a comment, that we're just gonna kinda keep this kinda fluid, and feel free to, you know, speak freely about anything that you see, so, yeah.
And by all means, gotta jump in, and I just have to share an aha moment that happened about hour and a half ago, got home from work for a few minutes, doorbell rings, gonna knock at the door, and it's three young gentlemen, they happen to be freshmen this coming year at West Junior High, and they took a look at my lawn and said, this guy must need a mow, he hasn't mowed his lawn in months, and so I asked them, hey, you guys in school in town here? Yeah, we go to West, and I said, oh, I, I work at the high school, are you excited about the academies? And they did, and all three of them, on their own, told me what academy, two health science and an engineering kid, right off the bat, they knew exactly what was going on. So the work at our junior high, which will be middle school teachers and counselors, has been fantastic with the daily courses and things, so, so we're getting there. So, we'll just go through some photos here, and again, comment on, you know, what area of the building it is. And construction is progressing very nicely. Once a week, I, I call it my trail reading, we go out to the back of the high school, and we get updates on areas, what may be falling behind, what's well ahead. And I do have to give a shout out to John Jankie, our District Activities Director, he's been instrumental in making sure that the, some of our signature spaces and activities and athletic spaces are, are on track, and coming on very nicely. So what you're looking at here is, from the kind of southwest parking lot, if you're at the high school, you're standing close to the tennis courts, and you're looking at our new southwest tower, and the expansion to our current south tower, classrooms on three levels. Any comments about that?
I was just gonna say, we're scheduling teachers into those rooms, and students will be in there this fall.
Southwest tower.
There's a little, it's a little touch and go right now, where we're gonna have everything ready when the kids come in, or if it'll look like the picture on the right. Hopefully, everything will be good and going.
Yeah. So again, these are the entrances to the academy wings, you'll see just over here on the side, there are, one of the, our academy sponsors, Apple Autos, we've got St. Francis, and I met with St. Francis a week ago, and we're already partnered with Alina EMS Services, I mean, there are so many community partners who are just willing to jump in and say, what can we do with you and for you? So it's fantastic. Again, this is our lower level floor, that's, they're working their way down from third, second, to first, so, out of all the spaces, this is the one that's, it's, it'll be, it'll be ready. Yeah, it'll be ready. All right. We've got, and this is our current commons area, the expansion to the commons, those are learning stairs, this is the rendering that it will look like very closely in just a matter of a couple of months. They're looking at opening this space up probably mid-winter.
To clarify, what we're looking at right now is the old competition gym.
This is the old competition gym. Second floor seating up top here, and learning stairs, and then some of our incubator hub signature spaces down there.
Scott, this is walled off right now, so, well, that's construction, that's not excessive, correct?
Big wall that's coming down soon.
Yeah. All right, ready?
Yeah. Again, kinda back by the tennis court, this is our activities entrance, uh, you're standing above in the bus loop, there's a new bus loop on that south, kinda west corner of the building. Just a little farther around the sidewalk, activities entrance here, weight room, and this is what it looks like currently, it's, it's getting some finishing touches, it looks nice. So we did have, uh, our athletes show up, and they're able to use that new competition gym today, we had our volleyball squad in there.
Yep. Didn't have to wear a hard hat or anything.
Wow.
And this is the weight room, again, from that outside parking lot, these are the windows here. Starting to get outfitted, ceiling is in. Again, right inside that activities entrance, this is the hallway where you'll come in, straight ahead is the concessions, most free here to study, where to go, what activities are where, and then the competition gym is right through this door here. Current and new, uh, competition gym, we were able to utilize the old leakers, some cost savings, and a couple of new scoreboards in, and again, it's ready to go, it's competition ready.
And you can see these windows up here are actually, I don't think we have any field house pictures on it, they got us on these slides, but this is the track in the field house, so if there's activity going on in the field house, if they're up on track, they can actually look into any competition going on in main gym.
Again, kind of, activities entrance is over here on the right, you come to the T at the end, concessions, walk around to the right, you're gonna get to the academic wings, to the left, there'll be a kind of a waiting area, some soft seating, and again, where the, uh, field house and the competition, there's other entrances around this side. They're, they're making some progress on those areas. Second floor view, kind of right above that concession stand, they're doing some flooring. The meeting I was at today, this hallway out to the, on the second floor, past the Sabration Room, is gonna be completed very shortly, and you'll have access to that track again, the field house area, mid-winter. Sabration Room is getting some flooring, the walls, the glasses in, and this'll be a multi-purpose room where teachers can reserve it, you can have clubs, activities in there, it's gonna be a very well-used space. Our, part of our cars, is there any?
Yeah, the staff can see that we're not quite ready for that part yet, as far as the lobby and all, I know that's some of our teachers have been trying to come in this week, and starting to get things, and they walk into their areas, and they're doing some piping, and doing, so we're, it's, it's coming together, and, um-
This mud pile we're looking at here will actually be kind of a tunnel system to go into the old front entrance, so during school, students, you'll be able to come in the front door and use, just be protected overhead, because they will be still working overhead.
So this, that, that's supposed to be open on Tuesday?
Uh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth week, something like that.
That was open for August for schedule pickup.
Nope. The twenty-second will still come through the activities, or the, uh, IT department as wing, tech wing, and the week before school will have that tunnel system in place. Then again, some of our signature spaces, this is our thrust stage, I think there was seating capacity of about three hundred and fifty. Mr. Alderson, is that correct?
Aldson.
I already got it. And that's what it looks like now, we held up my supports while I finished part of the And then this is, I'll be the principal of the, uh, human services as well, and this is our law and legal academy, or law and legal lab. Can see, you've got, and there's another one just after this, we'll kind of flip back and forth, but you've got your judges bench, couple of, uh, testimony witness booths there, we've got some chairs, and half of this room will be kind of the hardwood floor, or hard flooring, where you can have kind of that simulated, um, crime scene investigation, and then we can have a full mock trial, a law and legal courtroom, for use there's the park classroom, park lab. Yeah. So they're coming along.
There's the few different-
Yeah, the students were out, couldn't have been more excited, I talked to a few coaches today, they came back from the turf field, there's, the picture doesn't show it, but there's a, uh, paved walkway that goes all around the building, past construction, fenced off, so the kids are safe, and they were, they will use that field today. And what I heard is after the rain, obviously it's designed to dry out very quickly, after last night's, I mean, you know how much rain we got, it was dry, they used it, the coaches came back, and they were just giddy about it. Some of our finishing touches on our science labs in the new wing, they're gonna be really nice spaces.
And these will all have portable tables that they can roll up, and so the students can collaborate around the lab station, or they can move the tables into the teaching area. That's why the station is so small, that there's tables that will actually roll up, they can set it up all they want.
A former wrestler that used to have two mats width, no, it's got a third one, Dan Steen will be able to use that very shortly. And again, what we're looking at here is current construction area that will eventually turn into parking, around the building, kind of a three hundred and sixty degree parking, so if you're on the east side classes, and that's where you spend most of your time, we'll have parking over there, all the way north, southeast, so it'll be east to west, it'll be nice. Is that the last one?
That is the last one.
Scott, I was gonna say, that was the last part of, just as we're going through this, and we're talking, and the excitement that we have around the spaces that we're gonna have, the, the hard work, the teachers have been doing with their instruction, and really getting curriculum that is authentic and very real world, and then, when we talk to, um, pretty much been in conversation with the science museum, and looking at, at getting connections with, like, for me, arts and communications, Paisley Park, and, um, First Avenue, like, there are these, I go and talk to some of these leaders, these people, these business leaders, in, in the areas that we're all in, and I'm sure you all have the same experience, and they're excited, and they're like, wait a minute, what's happening in Shakopee? And they're, they're taking notice and looking at, yeah, the first thing is, what can we do, how do we, how, how can we get involved, and how do, how do we have synergy between what we have and what you have, that we can really benefit and get the most out of, out of that experience for a, a student, to be able to come out in the real world, to start, you know, adding value to their businesses and, and our greater community, so, it's, it's very exciting to be a part of this.
Are there any questions?
I'd like to say something. So, what I also want our community to remember, to remember, is that work on these academies started several years ago, um, by redesigning the curriculum in the junior highs. And I've told this story to a couple of people, but a friend of mine and I were walking the other day, and she was talking about how her son keeps talking about this class that he took last year in eighth grade, um, and the class was Code Red, which is our gateway course to the healthcare academy. And all summer long, he just keeps talking about this gateway course that he took, and, um, and she said, and he's decided he wants to explore being a flight nurse. And I said, a flight nurse, like, how did, how was that even connected? And she said, well, he got really excited about the first responding part of it, and in that introductory gateway course in eighth grade, they talk about possible careers, um, that this type of, um, coursework could lead to. And, um- And, and for me, a few years ago in our junior highs, we had woodworking, sewing, some music, a few others. But nothing that was as relevant to, to what their future will look like as what we have today. And so your kids don't know it and you don't know it, but your kids have already been experiencing the academy model if they're in junior high. And it's, it's pretty fantastic. So it's pretty exciting.
And I know what we plan to do this year, I know open house, our open house night is Tuesday, August twenty ninth. And I know I will have some informational sessions, a five o'clock and a six thirty. I think the key message, you know, living in the community and when I have those individual conversations with people. And so every opportunity I have to say this, I'll go ahead and I'll say it, is, you know, we live, we live in a state that has excellent schools. And we have, we have standards that we follow and we have a lot of great things that we currently do. And I don't see that level of teaching and what we're providing, because I don't, I don't see that changing. As a former business teacher and someone who, like back in two thousand and one, sitting with a couple of other business teachers, kind of talking about the same idea of how can we create pathways for kids so that they can walk out and have something that they can really wrap their head around of what is happening out in their world? That's what we're doing, but we're not doing that at the expense of making sure that they get those essential learnings, those standards in those core classes, your math, your science, your social, your English. We're still maintaining that. But when you think of the application piece of how that's applied, well, heck, if we can make a connection with a student who maybe going into is that intentional non-learner, right? And all of a sudden, there's a fire, there's a spark, there's something that excites him or her. And now we can use that application piece and now we tie that into those core areas where now they're motivated and they want to learn. You know, it's, it's a win-win. And, and I would argue, no matter what, you know, my, my kid hears, she could, she could go into arts and communications, but if she decides when she graduates, she wants to go to school to become an engineer. Regardless of what that academy is, I, I know she's gonna have the tools that she needs to do that because she's gonna have the opportunities to have that, what I call that well-rounded education. Those opportunities are going to, are going to exist. But having that home place where you have those common interests and those, those teachers that are really gonna build those relationships with you is, I think, is just vital as we become a community that is just becoming larger and larger.
It's funny, Jeff, that's kind of a conversation I've had on a lot of soccer sidelines, basketball sidelines, considering our fighter pits, whatnot. A lot of parents who have this belief that because you choose an academy, you can only be in that academy. Or you're required to take an elective from that academy every semester. And when I stop and explain the math of there are sixty-four credit opportunities and you could, you could complete multiple pathways of study and find out what you don't want to do or what you want to do. I don't know, does, do other people get that question as well? I guess you guys probably live it every day.
It's a skill set too. So it's, well, regardless if I'm learning and I'm in engineering or manufacturing or I'm in arts and communications or business entrepreneurship, there's a skill set that transcends all of those that will help them prepare for that future. And, and that's the part that I think is exciting. It's just now I can do, I can develop that skill set in a certain passion that I have, that I have voice and choice in.
And that was one, when I'm going to Nashville and talking to some students down there who experienced it and were going through the different academies. And some were doing some internships that we talked to. I talked to a student who was a junior who, there was just as much value because they realized, this is not something I want to do. And now for my senior year, I'm gonna focus on this other thing instead of being a freshman in college and spending all this money. And then realizing you don't want to do it. We're giving these kids opportunities, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. It's just as valuable to figure out what you don't want to do and what you do want to do. And that's what's exciting to me for my kids coming through Shakopee schools.
One of the things Jeff mentioned before too is we have a selection process with staff going forward, some tentative placements. And we base that on their selection. So the passions that teachers showed us is almost, I don't know, we got real close to a hundred percent of first choice. Here you go. You're gonna be passionate in the freshman academy, business and entrepreneurship. That's where your passion is as a teacher, whatever skill set. If you're an English math teacher, you're gonna grab a tape toward those kids. The kids are gonna grab a tape toward you and you're gonna have just a fantastic run at it.
And to your point, Matt, I think one of the, the goals that I feel that we're charged with now that I've gone through this year is making sure that through our future community engagement events, whether it's a forum like this or in the auditorium, is really giving some examples of what, here's a, here's what a schedule could look like. You know, if I, if I'm that kid and I wanna be, I want my APs, I want my role language, I want my band, I want my, I want all of those things, right? Which you should be able to get, is to be able to start provide some examples of how you can start piecemeal and how you can make these things work. And so that's what I'm working on is as we continue to push towards two thousand and eighteen, is just make sure that's in our message.
So question then for all of you. There's plenty of community that weren't able to be here tonight that probably have a lot of questions. So you were referring to additional community forums. What does, what do future forums look like and what does the schedule look like for that?
Well, I know, I know in the, in the piece that I wrote, at any time, anybody can call, can email, stop by, schedule something with me. Any of your team here? That, that's always, that's a given. But I do know that probably the closest one we have coming up is that evening of the twenty ninth. We'll have a five o'clock session and a six thirty session. And what we'll do is we'll take a little deeper dive into what we're, we're doing and really provide an opportunity that if I'm a, a parent, if I'm a community member, if I have questions about what this looks like, we want you to be able to speak to that.
And we'll be at a better place too to take a walk through here. You know, on a two-dimensional screen is great, but you walk through the spaces as many as you have.
As you say, the twenty ninth, is that, are you posting that somewhere so anyone in the general public can see it and for future, not just the twenty ninth?
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, so what we'll do is we'll have that in our, for our open house night, we'll be electronic forums of community. We'll make sure that we're using all of our different sources to get that word out.
But I think it's safe to say that between now and when we go live in eighteen, we will have multiple opportunities.
Oh, yeah.
Forums like that. That's just happened to be the nearest term.
The nearest one, yes.
And probably because we're on open house night, it's gonna be kind of geared towards the parents who already have kids in high school. But the ones who are in junior high are focused on their school. So I'm sure that we will then schedule, we just don't have identified in the year, year come. We have, if I could advertise anything that our building does, it's Saber Showcase Night. Yep. We've been doing it for multiple years, Ed Loizell and so on. And Elizabeth Dear kind of started with their programs, just showcasing what their students did throughout the semester. It's grown to what it has the last couple of years. But we do that at the end of the semester, which is in January, so the first or second week in January. The kids actually show and showcase what they've done this, for the semester. And that's valuable for the kids that are currently in our building, for the parents. They can see what their children are doing, but it's also valuable for our junior high students who, as they're trying to pick their courses and decide what they want to do or maybe their pathway, to come up and see what types of experiences I'm gonna gain. So that'd be one thing that I would, if anybody's listening to this, Saber Showcase Night, we do want the end of the first semester in January and another one at the end of second semester in May.
Yeah. And that was one of the things, you know, historically, we've always done all of our open houses on that Wednesday. It was one of the reasons why we purposely moved ours to a Tuesday night. So if you do have kids in the district, come out to the high school and learn more.
Awesome.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right, exciting stuff. All right, now before we get too far along, we need to actually rewind just a little bit. So if our Apple Autos friends could not leave just such a quick, we actually did not take, we got so excited, we didn't take the recommended app. So if I could just slip back to six point one real quick. And I would like to entertain a motion to approve the Apple Autos as the Academies of Shakopee Freshman Academy Champion.
So moved?
Second by Mary?
Mary.
Any discussion?
Just once again, thank you. Say hello to partnership come forward.
Yeah, thank you guys. We're excited as well.
All right, feel good about this one? All those in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Okay, let's move back up to item five point two. Is Mr. Orlovsky with us today? There he is. Dave's gonna give us an update regarding our attendance area discussions.
All right, well, tomorrow is the first public meeting that we have. Tomorrow is the first meeting of the attendance area task force. We've shared information here a number of times and we have put up the website. Now, if you all had a chance to go there, so I'm gonna show you the website quickly. I'm gonna talk to you about the kind of questions that have come in as a result of the website and let you know how we were responding to those. So let me connect here quick. Please let me connect here. We've got some boardroom right here. All I need is the district website.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, so I'll tell you the kind of questions that we've been getting so far. We posted three scenarios and right now they're named one A, two A and two B. We're getting people that are writing, I prefer X, I prefer one A, two A or two B. My kids go here, this'll keep us in the same place. And that's it. Quite a few like that. And we're getting some very detailed questions as well about how did you decide this? What was the criteria? How did you do this? And I'm, we're trying to respond to all those. And my goal is, there's probably been about, I'd say so far, twenty-five-ish. And I've probably called twenty of them. I've talked to fifteen of them and tried to make sure that anybody who does take the time, we want to make sure that they know we appreciate they're getting involved this way. And that we are looking for a broad range of perspectives on this to make sure we come up with the best plan when all is said and done on this. And that I am inviting them, even though tomorrow is a kind of a working group, there's about low twenties of us, maybe twenty-four at the most, that I'm inviting anybody who wanted to, to come and observe that part because there'll be maybe a little additional background information that they won't be getting somewhere else. And so we could have, I don't know, we could have a small gallery there, but there will be, if everybody who's on the task force shows up, we're gonna have about, it's either twenty-three or twenty-four people there.
So I want to come back to the members of the public that have sent forth questions and encouraged others to send forth questions too. They've been good questions and Dave's done a great job of responding. And we've talked through a lot of the questions already. And we want everybody to know that as of right now, there are no permanent answers. Where this is a process that we're working through and we definitely want to hear from the public.
Dave, has there been enough commonality in any of the questions yet that would lead you to post the answers? In other words, you got six of the same thing over and over that we posted an answer or are we just handling them individually so far?
There is, I'll show you that. There is on this site that I'm gonna show you, there's an FAQ with some questions answered on there. The, the most common message is, I like this one or I prefer that one. So it's a statement more than a question. Some of them do have pretty detailed and good, good questions on them too. And I'll give you an example of one that was a perspective that, you know, as much as you try to think of everything, you don't think of everything. And that's why this is really important to have this broad representation of the committee as well, is my student or my neighborhood has moved five times in the last ten years or something like that. So what I, I tried to do is go back and look at what were the district initiated attendance area moves and kind of cross-reference that against what impact has that had on students that are in our system right now? And so that'll be, that was a good insight, I thought, that we hadn't thought of, that we'll be able to share that information with the task force tomorrow. So, so that would be one that's come up, I'd say consistently and we'll have that. So on the, on the website, this is the main page of our website. Under quick links right now, there's this attendance area information center. So it gets top billing. I don't know if it's because it starts with the letter A or we paid extra for that spot. But in here, there is a lot of information and on this main page, it even talks about what the criteria is, how we got to where we are, how long we've been talking about this. And it's really been five plus years that this has been in the works. Even when the sixth grade center opened, that we realized that that was not gonna last us forever. And there's our growing need and there's, there's the current capacity, our populations and projected populations in the buildings. And then there are the proposed scenarios. And when you go in here, then this is where I think most of the questions are coming from, is people actually looking at these. But there's also... That was a bad move. We'll go back. There's also... And here, a, I got some questions about kind of looking at the, the balance and more details than we put up there. And so there's the presentations with all the details in it that we showed at each of the board meetings as well. So anything we have, we're trying to get up here, okay? So if anybody wanted to do, you don't have to because we're gonna redo some of this tomorrow to get everybody the same foundational knowledge. But if you wanted to, if you're one of those guys or gals that reads ahead, this is where you can go to read ahead. And that'll be some of the information for tomorrow. Okay? That was it? Any questions?
Not a question, Dave, but maybe for the benefit of everyone watching, the task force is made up of questions, not the names, but just kind of how we got.
Sure, sure. We have, like I said, there's in the low twenties for members. There's two parents from each of the elementary schools in the sixth grade center, so that's ten. I have three elementary principals and a sixth grade center principal. I have a junior high principal. I have a city planner, someone from the bus company, a childcare representative, two early childhood parents, three school board members, Gary, me, Crystal. So our communications department actually is on, actually is on the team as well. So anybody doing the math, twenty-four, I think it is. So we tried to get a broad group. And what I also said to the people that I invited that were not part of the task force, that may want to come to that meeting tomorrow, is that even though they're not gonna be actively participating in that part, if they had questions as a result of something that went on or ideas, that we'll certainly be there to answer questions for them at any time as well. So I've also asked the people that I've talked to if they could do me a favor and we'll see, I offer this to anybody, if they hear rumors or have questions or are not certain about something, to just call, either work through communications or even call directly and we'll try to answer in person as many questions as we can.
When are we tomorrow?
Uh, we're gonna be in room two oh one, which is the double room right over there at six thirty, six thirty to eight. Okay? Anything else? You good?
Yeah.
I think it'll be fun. Okay?
And our three board members are Angela, Scott and Reggie.
Correct. All right. Anything else? Good? All right.
Okay, let's move down back to business action items and we will invite Director Finance Suzanne Johnson up. Six point two, MDE recommended language update. And I'll let you totally run on this one.
Sounds good. All right, so on our last business meeting on July tenth, I had the board authorize a new single board approved referendum authority of three hundred dollars. And when I submitted that to MDE, they wanted us to actually rescind one of those pieces. So more of a technicality, just so that they have on file, even though our resolution said we were doing that transition, they wanted a separate document that said that the two thousand and thirteen would be rescinded. So they just wanted that in the file. So this is just something that I, being new, know they wanted two pieces. So yeah, I think it's a pretty simple rescission of the two thousand and fifteen priority.
So this is no mathematical change, this is administrative change.
As required by MDE. And it's fairly common that they'll go back to districts if you've incorrectly done a motion or action.
Right.
So they're just making sure it's done the way that they want it done.
And then that effect is the same, still about 300?
Yes, absolutely.
Which was already.
Okay, any questions for Suzanne? Okay, herein none, I will entertain a motion to approve a resolution rescinding the prior resolution on September twenty-third, 2013. The converted voter approved referendum authority to a board approved referendum authority that's presented.
I'll make that motion.
Reggie, seconded by Angela. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign?
Wait. This says it needs to be a roll call.
Well, you have the actual, isn't it?
Yeah, I knew that and it's just... Sorry, Gary and I spoke about that earlier and...
Yeah, we said it to a resolution.
Let's rewind that, so hold your eyes. We'll go back to the roll.
Okay, here we go. Bowerman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
McKean?
Yes.
Pass?
Yes.
Romanski?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
And Swanson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, who cares? All right, thank you Suzanne. All right. We've talked. All right, item seven, new business discussion items. Kevin, Bjorken, come on up. We're going to talk about activity buses.
Yes. So recently, we have discussed the possibility of looking at that. Can I stand to, okay? Sure. Whatever you want. To look, take a really solid, hard look at the activity buses that take place after school, five days a week, four forty-five, and take the series of kids home for different activities, intended for sports, after work, help, that kind of thing. So academic sports as well, some, some opportunities in sports. And so over the last sometime, we've kind of monitored and I met with the other secondary principals and we got around the table and started looking at the real numbers of the kids who actually take the buses. And the numbers were smaller than expected, anywhere from five to twenty kids on a bus very often from a single school, with the low end being even a bus with no kids on it. And the high end being just before grading period, when you have a whole bunch of kids on the buses trying to catch up on the homework after school, did a ride. It varied a little bit from school to school. In one school, west mostly, she said most of the kids there actually attending the after-school helped walk or get rides. They very seldom use the buses. Jeff mentioned at the high school that a lot of kids maybe got on the buses who weren't there for academic purposes but took them otherwise. So, long story kind of shorter, we're not sure that's the most financially efficient way to reach the needs of those kids. We would need to look at different possible scenarios and things like that, but given the cost, are we really serving as many kids as we intended through that program? And what could we tweak or change to try to make that into something that we're getting, reaching the absolute most kids possible? How do we get the rest of those kids attending? So we, you know, our goal was from the very beginning to capture as many of the kids as we possibly can. And if we're not catching them this way, what's our next step in to try to do that? And we would like to kind of take that further and explore that and kind of see where, where we can go with that, whether it be less days combining programs into different busing that is in existence, that sort of thing. And of course, we want to try to catch the community as much to involve the people that take the bus or even wherever the bus, that kind of thing, to make some future judgments about whether that's the best, best way to go. So, questions for me?
What does this next school year look like?
Um, that's still in the air. That hasn't been decided one way or another that I'm aware of. Suzanne?
Right now, it's continuing as it is. It's just something that we should look at as the year progresses to see what other options and to get feedback from the community.
And there are different times in the year when that bus may be used by more students than other times of the year. And all of those things have been talked about and so there's no hard set date, but we would want to make a decision that would be timely and after receiving public information so that we're not surprising anybody and, and/or, you know, keeping kids out of any opportunities that they may need.
Kevin, what obligations, or Suzanne, or Gary, whoever might know, what obligations, if any, do we have for the bus company, contractual or otherwise, to make a change midstream?
The bus company is aware in their time of whatever decision we were to make their, their family.
Discontinuing if, if that was the case.
Yeah, because I think we only started them a couple of years ago and we had two sets of them, plus the one that goes poster going schools out. And so the six o'clock one immediately went away, so the four o'clock one is the one that will end. But there would be no problem with not offering that bus from the bus company's standpoint.
And we're also discussing the time at four forty-five. It's, you know, roughly two and a quarter hours for an eleven-year-old kid to stay after. Is that the most efficient way?
Right.
Could we capture more kids if it were an hour, say? And could we get more? And, and we have families with limitations. They don't have all night to spend at school, they need to get home for whatever business they have at home. Could we capture more kids if we reconsider even the time alone? So lots of things to explore outside of this really set brick of four forty-five, this is what we do, worth looking into.
Would it be worth, I mean, I, I have kids at the junior high and high school and I don't see many communications about this opportunity at all. Would it be worth exploring this fall, seeing if we can communicate a little bit better? If that would help, if it's, if it's in, if it really is a need?
Yeah, I, very good. Always, I know that I can only speak for my school and we share it with parents at, in fifth grade even, when the parents come for information night, we talk about the opportunity after school. Uh, we don't, that doesn't mean we can't change it, make it better, but we, we do from the very beginning say that this is an opportunity and some kids really, really use it faithfully. And I just wish that we could catch a lot more kids. So a system that catches more kids, probably better.
Whatever it is.
Yeah.
So it's safe to say this is a first reading and discussion topic. We would like public input if parents or students are interested in sharing ideas that can be enhanced or if it's just not valuable.
Yeah, I think we would collect, you know, some of that, some sort of data on people's perceptions or whatever, or their intentions on use and that sort of thing. Uh, how much does it even help the kids that are there? We want to know that information as well. Do they do better in school because they are taking advantage of? And that's a marketing thing for us as well. If people are using it and they are taking advantage and doing better because of that, that's what we want. And that's some good news to share out there, then, you know, you fill those buses up and it makes a lot of kids actually successful, it's working. We just got to fill them up. Yeah, find the right way to do that. Okay?
All right, Suzanne, you want to come back up?
Yep.
And you can just go ahead and roll seven point two and seven point three, that you need to.
Sounds good. All right, so seven point two is policy four twelve expense reimbursement. So this is an existing policy that we're wanting to add language to, just to clarify some things. So a majority of the language changes, I would say, are from my staff where they have issues where we can't enforce things as well as we should. So just defining instances where they have had issues where we don't have a policy that says yes or no to certain things. So I wouldn't say that a lot of the context or a lot of what's in here has changed. We are requiring preapproval on all travel. So we have a form that we have created. We're also changing timelines in terms of people getting things in more timely so that we're not sitting out there waiting for, for their, their documentation. I mean, it causes some problems for us at the end of the year when things are flowing through really late. We have, you know, some specific rules about only co-chair fare, no first class, try to pick the lowest, lowest flight, really think about what the needs are in terms of attending a conference, if you need to go the night before, if you could, you know, save on hotel costs or something to not stay the night before. And then we set some rates within here. We set rates per meal for people when they are traveling so that that's defined because in the old policy that was, I believe it was worded, that the superintendent develops those rates, so we put them directly in the policy. Talked about no reimbursement for meals that are in the conference just to encourage people, you know, getting what they paid for. I would say we also define some non-reimbursables that some were in there, some weren't. So flowers and gifts and personal meals and computer hardware, software. We don't want people buying those on their own. We want them to come through the technology department because that is the normal process. And then we didn't, we put food in here and put no food for all these things, but I guess I welcome feedback on, you know, what's acceptable. If we've got teachers staying after school and it's not part of their normal workday and we're asking them to stay right through the dinner hour, I feel like we need to have some policy in place for that, but I didn't want to go through a lot of time writing it and have, you know, a different preference. So I left under food at district events, as a lot of knows, but definitely subject to change in that. I also asked MSBA for their feedback and I got their response today, but I haven't had a chance to go through every item on their list. So we've kind of run it through a second set of eyes to make sure we've covered what seems reasonable. Under this, we've clarified who approves and says that it has to be a level above. So in here, we don't directly talk about superintendent, but I think we would want to decide is that the finance committee, is that the board chair, who wants to approve those expenses as well and who approves the school board's expenses? So those are things that we, we need to discuss, but we wanted to get these in for discussion and move on to first reads once everybody's had a chance to look at them.
And Reg, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we brought this to CPAC, they thought the finance committee would be the main complex, the, would be the superintendent's.
Peacock, yes, and we, I think it would be the place to do other things too, but to Peacock in particular.
So, what was it?
Well, it's, it's a question. So you're looking for our feedback. If, are we constituting this as a first reading tonight?
We are not because of the timing. I wanted to make sure we gave everybody time to review it. I didn't want to throw it in as first read. It's kind of a lot to take in.
That's fine. And, and the reason I ask, I'm glad you said, because you said MDE's gotten back to you and I, or MSBA, whoever was. And I'd also like to see what they may.
Sure.
So I have a question, if it's even come up. And that is on the reimbursement for meals when someone's traveling, just from personal experience, both corporately and then you. And I can't remember if it's the GAO or whoever it is, but there's a government site you go to that's reflective of the geography in which you're, you're at. Hypothetically, if you're in, you know, San Francisco or LA, it's a lot more expensive obviously than, than it is Memphis. So we, this has some set numbers, which I don't have a problem with, but it may be problematic when someone's legitimately traveling.
And we felt, we had that exact discussion in our group and we felt that those amounts were reasonable and that if somebody wanted to eat the filet mignon, that they could pay for the difference, but that everyone could eat for those rates set within there. Yes, you might not be able to have something. Um, the committee that we start, I mean, it's major, majority finance people that...
So this reflects kind of, yells first pass on this.
What we thought was reasonable and we had that exact discussion, are there different rates for different cities? But our thought was, was that you could definitely find dinner for $25 and that if you wanted something fancier, that then you could get the 25, but that you would pay the difference out of your pocket.
So then you would like us to do what? Individually provide you feedback as a side, or take it as a financial committee?
This is my first time with policy committee and, and how we handled this. So I guess I don't know if the policy committee wants to meet and gather that data or how.
I think you probably send it all through me and then Matt, Mary and I can figure out and then you can relay it to us and choose what to do.
So you prefer, I'm asking, would you prefer to mark this up and send it to you or just add a comment on 4A, here's what it is, or?
Uh, yeah, I mean, mark it up and get it back to me.
Okay.
Because we also have to have another meeting on other policies. We're going to also have first readings for it. So we can have, once we get everyone's feedback, we can set that next meeting for ours. And then we can start moving forward with all those changes as well. But yeah, so this one, red line, I can get it back to me.
And so to that end, I don't remember what it is on Word document, but then red line, get it to Tommy or you do that.
I think, I think all of this, I think, is posted as PDE, I'm very happy to get you forward.
We'd need a Word document.
Yeah, I can definitely.
And if we have, yes.
When exactly would you like this back by?
Um, I should bring for first read the next meeting.
First read will be fourteenth, next month, the eleventh?
The eleventh.
Next month, so.
You do read it.
Could you get, yeah, I was just going to say, did you have two weeks from today?
Yeah, every evening.
Okay. So two weeks from today, then we can set up a meeting for next.
And I will forward MSBA comments to you. A majority of them are just wording, but they're, the one paragraph was just being clear on superintendent approval.
So I like a lot of what I saw and I've kind of shared this with you already. My big question is enforcement. And, you know, what you're, what we're doing here is, although it seems somewhat elementary, it's going to take, you know, it's going to take people power in order to actually make sure that this is, this is enforced. What, what concerns do you have about your existing team and the capacity that you have to be able to implement all of these kinds of changes with, with the headcount that you have right now?
I would say that my staff have been doing that all along, reviewing for these types of things. They just haven't had a way to enforce because it was so gray. So I think now with black and white, I mean, they are ready to go back to people and say, you know, really, what was the carrot we're talking for? So, I mean, they're actually looking for this guidance. And so I don't envision having any problems with enforcing. The one thing I told them we'll have most issue with is we have, you know, get things to supervisor for approval within thirty days and then you must get it to our offices by forty-five. The only issue I see there is if a supervisor was out and then it took them a little bit of time, but we said we would look at those dates to make sure that if it looked like they submitted it on time, that we wouldn't punish them for someone not being around to sign the documents.
And other considerations for you to, to think about that Suzanne and I have talked about is considering our financial situation, you know, how much out-of-street travel do we want to have right now? And, and to have those considerations. And then what, who will be the people approving that out-of-state travel, even if it were for the superintendent? And, you know, I would recommend that any travel I have has to be approved too. And, and so all those pieces need to be thought about and, and make sure that we have a really clean system and probably for right now, just for only necessary items.
My apologies, I'm just completely unaware, but when people are submitting these documents, is it electronically, is it pieces of paper that they sent?
It's pieces of paper, but we do make them tape them to a eight and a half by eleven because we scan everything in. And so we do have a process where they know the way that it has to be submitted. So they have their reimbursement plan.
Have we ever, I don't know if there are any efficiencies to be gained by using some software to give it in.
Well, yeah, I mean, with that. I am actually going to explore with Infinite Campus, even on the accounts payable side for checks if, if they have a routing through because where I came from, we actually, everything went through where you initiated your own request for a check and then it went through approvers in the system behind the scenes. And when it got to accounts payable, you weren't having to review for as many of these items as we do now. So that's something that's also being looked at. All right.
Oh, and I do know that for you, a lot of people probably work for companies that have expense reimbursement firms that do this kind of work for them or show up and have software, you know, simply taking pictures with your, your iPhone or whatever and attaching receipts electronically that way. So I, I mean, again, the content is fine, I'm fine with that. It's just I want to make sure that whatever we do is manageable and not so much that we're chewing up headcount that, quite frankly, we need doing other things than this. And I would probably propose that you guys take a look at, you know, you know, we said as well, Gary, um, looking at if it makes more sense to outsource this kind of work to a third party so that you can focus on the approval component and not the, you know, the taping and the paper.
Yep, and I think you and I both said that, I mean, I'm familiar with Confer and I think they have a really good product, so there's things out there that we can look at.
We use that in my office and it's like...
It is really nice.
And my manager gets it in a second and you're on your way.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the...
Yeah, so I have a request slash recommendation or recommendation slash request. If you're going to incorporate, you said you've got MDE, MSBA comments. I would suggest to make those and then send it out rather than send it out separate.
Yeah.
So even if it takes another day or two for you to incorporate that, it's, we can still get our answers back to you, Tony, in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And I know I sort of asked if it was possible to get a red line version? If it's, if it's at all possible to preserve the original? I know, I know it's the...
I usually do. The Peacock I do.
I know it's a lot of changes, but if there's any way to preserve what was already there, otherwise we just end up going back and forth and trying to match ones, so.
This was one of those that I was like, ugh, I should have...
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so actions are, you're going to add the feedback.
Yep.
Resend will take two weeks and then if you can get it into...
Do, do, we have a, let's get a date?
Yeah, let's get, let's, well, what?
Fourteen, eight, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Sorry, what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? Okay, just want to make sure we were clear on that.
All right, anything else on expenses?
Not on the expense rate.
Go ahead, roll your peacocks.
All right, so the Peacock manual is not actually board policy, but we brought it forward just because we want the board... the board to see the changes that we've made. So here obviously is, some of the changes are responsive to what's been going on, so I mean, we've said that things shouldn't be shipped to your home and we've added that not just misuse, you can take your card away, but even if it's repeated misuse, whether it's intentional or not, that we would take that card away. We also have set really strong deadlines in terms of this card goes basically the statement period is the twenty-seventh to the twenty-eighth or something like that, so we've asked that by the tenth of the following month that everything is into our department and if it's not, we're going to bring your card to a zero balance until we get what we want. So I don't think that that's a huge issue for a majority of, of who uses the card. We do discourage some, you know, Amazon Prime, Costco, Sam's, we want to get our hands around that. I mean, there are some like Central. Obviously, they're like buying paper towels and goldfish and wipes and everything they need at those places and it is a much better use of money because you can get a much better price. And so it's just assessing what the business needs are and making sure we don't have them, just to have them. We also recommend, I think, that one thing that's good is that for people that have the P-cards, you hear all the time, I used it by accident, it's the same color as my card. It's like, well, leave it in your desk if you have no reason to use it. So we've put that in policy. We've defined more allowable and unacceptable items, which is consistent with the other policy. We've given strong thought on how people will repay us if we find something that they shouldn't have charged on the card. So, uh, one of the open items that I have on page six is that I think that one of the next policies that we should tackle is our bidding and contract rules. I don't think that MSBA has a policy because it's state statute, but I'd like it to be out there for all of our employees to know what those rules are, just so that there's no confusion there, so we have that as a highlighted item to reference future policy and we could state what state statute is in here and just go with that until we have formal policy. So just, you know, narrowing things down, making sure that we have everything that we can think of in place to make sure that we're not having issues happen like it happened.
So just out of curiosity, is this going to go to CFAC for them to take a look at?
It did, it did, yeah, this already has. And which was, you asked, that was going to be my comment, this is reflective already of CFAC.
Yep, yep. And the other thing that we're going to do and I, this is again, something we need to decide. I know that at one time we brought forward everybody's limit and the board got a list of here's who has cards and here's what their limit is. I think it's once a year. I would propose that we're assessing even, I think sometimes what we find is the supervisor has a high limit, their admin assistant has a small limit. So two people have cards, but they have the same need for that card, so let's up the limit of the one who needs it, get rid of the one who doesn't and try to use more of a shared card methodology for things like that because I don't need a P-card because I might go to one conference, you know, in Duluth for Masbo or something like that. So in those cases, I would just use my admin assistant's card to put the hotel on and things like that and then my food I would get reimbursed for at a later date. So we'll be asking, I think we're going to present some of this preliminary at the all admin retreat, just to get them up to speed on things that we're thinking about, so they're also thinking about them while we're waiting for policy to be approved and at that time ask them some feedback on if they agree. I'm hearing most people say absolutely, we wouldn't need two cards, we would need one if the limits were adequate. And there's also a lot of, I mean, these cards you do get, sound like a, you know, a couple percent rebate. I want us to be able to, if we've got a big order of tablets or something that we need for our classrooms, we should be putting them on the card if we've done, you know, the right quoting or bidding or if that process has taken place, we should be taking advantage of what the card does offer, so I don't want to restrict limits in the capacity where we know teaching and learning or technology may need a little higher limit, so. And I don't think we've actually done that in the, the history of the card, so.
Alright, so as far as feedback from us, um, this would not necessarily need to go to Tony, but you are, or yes, it would because we're going to incorporate now as?
No, I just wanted to make sure it was right.
No, the procedure.
Wanted to make sure it's kind of on the docket and that you know that these changes are going into place and so I think this one is, it's gone through CFAC and we'll be ready to pull live with this one.
Really? Can I just, one?
You found a spelling, I think Sarah found that too.
Sorry, okay.
Sarah did tell me, she was like, I've got one.
I've got one too.
Safe for the romantical areas, sorry.
What we briefly talked about is like a procedure like this, maybe once we get the communication team run up, we can post it maybe on the website. So like our public can see it as well as our staff administration, like they can go into the district cap, so they can see what are our procedures.
Yeah.
So it's openly, so if people aren't, you know, teachers and they aren't looking through, if I'm trying to find it.
Well, that's what I wanted, I wanted to be easy for everybody to find policy and to some extent procedure. We're kind of talking about how we envision that looking because I want people to be able to find what they're looking for. If we decide we don't want to change MSBA policy and we like that standard, we need to find a place for the procedure to live that everybody can find and know what's expected.
So obviously, one of the biggest opportunities here in the not-so-distant past was that we did not know, uh, some of the offenses that were going on, so what does the report back to the board look like as far as frequency of, if issues come up, what does that look like?
We talked about that in CFAC too. We talked about, do we periodically give a list of the zero balance people or I mean, if somebody's a repeat offender, I don't think they're going to have to be reported because we'll just take their card away, but I'm open to, I mean, it's just how often, you know, that we want to do the, report that to a finance committee or.
I'll be honest, at this point, I, I kind of want to know every single one of them.
Yeah.
Because if there is an issue with the P-card, um, I'd also want to know that that employee is uh, in Keith's crosshairs to make sure that there isn't other, um, issues that we might not need to look at as well, so I don't think that's overreacting. I think we were in a position of not knowing, we need to know.
Yep.
And I would rather know it all and, and decide that we can pull off, um, than to take the same approach.
So in the spirit of, of offering a, a solution that I could, and I don't know of quarterly, it's too often in terms of frequency of issues, which we know have not been, ninety-nine percent of them work fine. Um, quarterly, you could bring that just as an item to the finance committee and then the finance committee could bring that forward to the board, even if it's, there's nothing or here's what we found. I don't even know if twice a year would be adequate.
Well, and I was thinking, I mean, we could start where even just before seeing even a few where I can give you an update of those meetings to, to say we've had nobody violate policy or, you know, in the beginning to see if it's a lot or none, to make that determination of whether
I would, yeah, I'd prefer any, any meeting, just if there's nothing to hide, I'll say there's nothing to hide.
Yep.
But in terms of guidance for Suzanne, are we, in essence, saying funnel that through the finance committee, whatever committee that is, makeup going forward? And then that can be something that is part of the committee updates that you bring forward. It seems to be a logical flow.
Yep. I think we could just start out with it being a, like a standard agenda item or if there is anything, anything you need to be aware of.
And suffice it to say, a step that will occur before that will be discussing if there are any issues with that staff member supervisor, obviously.
Can I ask for a clarity question?
Yeah.
When you talked about reviewing your P-cards and we currently do it now, are you saying that we should look at them more frequently? Like at a quarterly basis versus?
I think annually is okay. I just think we need to figure out what the right limits are to bring forth to, so it might take a little bit of time of gathering feedback from supervisors and such to make sure we don't pull too many.
Yeah. Does that list ever change throughout the year with somebody moving or getting a different position or that we would need to review more often?
Occasionally, someone will have a, you know, a big purchase that they need to make and we are allowed to raise that limit for that time period to allow them to have that and not have it be declined, but then we bring it back down to the limit, so I guess it's kind of a preference thing on, we don't just do it for anybody. There has to be a valid reason for that. I guess in terms of people moving, it's a little bit harder. I would think most of the time you'd have somebody going to a position that has one and then somebody's left and it's just swapping out that limit from one, one person to another.
Well, it, it, right now, we're proving a list of actual names and dollar amounts. It may be more appropriate that in January, we approve a slate of positions and amounts so that you have the flexibility
Yep.
in your time to do what you need to do, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Easier.
Although the cards, I'm assuming are issued with names and then you, so that's
We would give a standard admin system or elementary.
Right.
And if it's deemed that that admin system that needs it through the proper tools and their, to be, to
Do you think you would have time, Suzanne, between now and January, with everything else you're doing, to get to that kind of new slate? So when we see this in January, hopefully that can be kind of our go-forward plan for approving P-cards, whether it's by category or by name, whatever it is, but you would have reviewed it by then.
Yep.
I think it should be both name and category.
We've always done it by name, it's, it's, it's always
So when we're reviewing, it's kind of nice to know what they do.
Yeah.
We did have, um, the January nine, twenty seventeen, the attached P, uh, card holder spreadsheet um, in board book has levels one through six and then it has all the names that you mentioned. So that was January.
So if you reviewed that, bring yourself, bring your last question to me.
On this one, um, similar to the last one, you have the same, um, wording as far as who the approval is.
Yep.
So, and it says the authorized approver is one level senior to the requister. Um, again, we'll have the same situation with the C-attendants. Possibly going through the finance committee or, oh, I can, okay. Huh?
Not possibly.
Yes, will, okay, will, okay. Uh, this is, this looks a little, it, doesn't the finance department get all the P-card statements?
No.
So they actually go to the?
Statements to the P-card statements, but they go online and they print their statement and they attach all the documents.
So like an admin at an elementary building, um, in theory, this would be the assistant principal or principal, that would be the approver? And they, that principal gets the statement and reviews it and, okay.
And that will be new. I mean, I don't think that we have had necessarily a good process for supervisor level to, to, you know, know who to go to for approval. So majority of the time it will come across my desk if someone at that level does submit it and it's only signed by them, but that's why I want to get the message out that they need to do that and it needs to come up to our department. Fully approved.
Okay.
And again, if this were to be something that we would consider outsourcing, those expenses would be pushed to you directly and say, hey, Sean, you have things you need to submit receipts on, it would, it already be knocked on your door and then you're, you're in all that, so.
Alright.
Alright, so no actual action, just?
Just information.
Good information.
Discussion.
Okay, anything else for Suzanne? Alright, thanks for all those revisions, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Okay, we'll move on to number eight, uh, new business action items, of which we have none. So we will then move on to number nine, other, and Gary, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to do a quick follow-up to a communication that occurred at the bond oversight committee last Wednesday. Um, and I want to commend the newspaper for their accuracy on what was shared at the meeting, but as we know, oftentimes, social media, different, uh, outlets can take information in different directions and so um, just to repeat what we talked about at that meeting, that in two thousand fifteen, two million dollars were two million dollars within capital funds was committed to the high school expansion project. Now, as superintendent, it would be incumbent upon me to make sure that that two million dollars is available in the capital budget years later when it's needed to be used. Um, that did not occur in this case and that really created the problem that, that was set up. Um, the capital fund had the balances, has been reduced over the last several years and so that amount that was set aside in the capital fund isn't there and the general budget doesn't have the ability to shoulder that additional amount, so. And also, some change orders that, you know, occur regularly during the construction process, but some were approved in this case by the superintendent that also might have contributed to the situation, so, um, but what we're doing now is continuing to look at what remains of the project to see if there are additional cost savings that we can make or anything that needs to be scaled back. Um, there was a thought by the previous superintendent that there would be large sponsorships, um, from academy partners that could mitigate some costs and that was never followed through upon. Um, and, and the, the figures that we presented last week were on the conservative side, so um, where we actually end up with that two million dollars is going to be significantly less than that two million dollars. But, um, so we, we just wanted everybody to be aware of it and that's one of the things that you're going to get with me as the superintendent is that we're going to tell you if there's a problem, we're not going to hide it. That was literally my first day of work and not often do people have to show up on their first day of work and break that kind of news to their school board and, and, but that's the kind of transparency that we're going to have and it was a problem that was, was, uh, created by the past administration and we're going to fix it and so I just wanted to go on public record and, and say that, to clarify that in case there are any questions.
I'd like to add a thought, if that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two years ago, when we as a board, um, made this decision, what we understood our financial reality to be isn't what we know it to be today. So this two million dollars that we allocated to the, um, expansion of the high school um, existed for us when we made that decision. Um, and as much as I understand that this is going to have an impact on the expansion of the high school, um, I'm actually at peace with how the money was spent. Keep in mind, this, these were general fund dollars, these were never the referendum, referendum dollars. Because I'm fairly confident that knowing what I know today, um, I would never vote to spend an additional two million dollars on the, the expansion of the high school if it could be spent on staff salaries and, uh, meeting our obligations for health and safety, which is ultimately where it was spent. Um, and so it's not an excuse for the mistake, but it is a perspective that, um, that I have processed the last few days, so.
I'll add to that a little bit by saying that as much as it was, um, unfortunate to realize this two million, we also recognize fully that we don't know what we don't know and the previous administration may well have done things that we're going to find. We don't, if we had a list, uh, we would know where to look, but we don't have a list, so we don't necessarily know where to look. So to the extent that it's possible, I know our finance team is digging as deep as they can and everybody's hearts and minds are in the right place, but I guess I want to, as board chair level said, everybody in this room and everybody that may be watching this to say, this may not be the end of tripping a landmine. And that's the only way I know how to phrase it, again, because we don't know what we don't know. And I could personally get really super angry and upset every time something like this happens, but that will serve no purpose because at the end of the day, we're here to get this fixed, as Gary said, and that is really the primary focus we have to have, so anything, quite frankly, that detracts from actually fixing is just a, it's a, it's a distraction and I'll put that out of my mind because I know that our, uh, our attention needs to be forward, so. Just want to put that out there. Anything else, another?
The only other thing I want to say is, uh, I missed a few people when you came in. I definitely want to shake everybody's hand and, and thank you all for being here, so if I missed anyone, one of my goals is going to be to meet everybody in, in this school district and, uh, I'm going to do my darndest, so before you leave, if I didn't get a chance to shake hands with you, please, uh, please catch me at the end of the meeting. I'm thrilled to be here.
Okay, can we leave?
Is, is there another other?
Sure. We got Tony's other.
Can I have Tony's other? Okay. Um, I want to say a thank you to Amazon because I got to experience something this week that was really stinking cool and, uh, thankfully, I, I don't have a big job, so I'm able to, to maybe spend some time doing time doing these things, but we got to go to the junior highs and, um, see what Amazon has done for our engineering and tech ed kids. And they've donated something called, it's a CNC machine, but it's a computer numerical control machine. Um, each junior high will have one, and what this can do, it literally brings dreams to life. These kids create it on a piece of paper, they design it in a, in a, um, computer program. Thank you. And if they design...
Gary wants to be in there.
Not a techy person, but then what they design in their mind, if they've designed it right, the computer will build it. And it's really, really cool, and not only that, but this is a, this is an actual machine that ties directly to a job that's here in Shakopee at Amazon and probably other, um, businesses, and it's a well-paying job. Um, and so I am just so excited and so thankful to Amazon for what they did for us. Well, TJ and all the tech ed...
And the tech ed staff.
Staff, yeah. Um, they were instrumental in this, and they've just been outstanding, and they're, they're even more excited than I am, so it's pretty cool.
It was really...
Try to believe?
Well, it's not even the first contribution by Amazon.
No.
Ten thousand dollar contribution, I think it was ten thousand for robotics teams, so...
Yeah.
They're clearly a very nice partner.
Yeah, and they're great supporters.
So nice to recognize them.
Thanks.
On another other, to talk to our students, um, we had our local soccer club, Shakopee Soccer, had six teams go to state, which I think is a first, and I think two or maybe three won state. So it's great to see our students, many of our students involved. Good to see a lot of people driving from Shakopee to Blaine for a lot of games. Thankfully, the championships were here in Shakopee. It was great to see a, a large contingent of Shakopee residents, uh, and very supportive. It was great to see hundreds of parents and students supporting each other. Okay. Any other others? Any other others? Okay. Give me updates, give me reports. Should I hear from Bach? I guess it's not, we're moved after.
We shifted our finance committee meetings from what would have been tonight in front of the board meeting at the request of Suzanne and the finance group, to now in front of the learning session, basically the second meeting of the month, because that allows for better coordination with their scheduling and when financial records are available, et cetera. So that update, if it's not provided that evening, it'll be provided kind of in arrears at the next business meeting.
So like this month, since there's only, there's not a learning session?
Uh, I don't know how we've addressed that, so we'll have to figure that out.
Just take the night you have left it?
I know.
We may end up having, sorry to interrupt you, Gary.
No, go ahead.
We may end up having it anyway, uh, because there's only a few months that that happens, but because the ongoing need, we, we probably need to do that, so we'll examine scheduling then.
And I'd like to live our current meeting reality through December, and then maybe in January, take a look at our structures at our organizational meeting and decide what works well, what needs revising, and talk about that then.
The other committee meetings, there are plenty of updates. Okay, uh, then we'll move on to eleven, recognition of visitors to board meeting. So it's to be that public comment section. If you go ahead and please sign in, and, uh, as has been customary, we'll afford anybody who wants to talk two minutes, and again, we won't be doing actual engagement, but you feel pretty pleased to provide comments.
Hi, I'm Janie Hannes, and I didn't have this on the plan, but I thought of it as you guys were talking about policy and procedures. What will be the new policy or procedure for whistleblowing? Um, because we've all been hearing that people knew about what was going on, but everyone was afraid of losing their job, their position, you know? So what is going to happen going forward so that if I worked in the district and I saw something going on, I could report it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, I'm Tim Johnson. I just want to say again, Gary, from the community, it's great to have you here, uh, and thank you for the transparency. So I've got a question about transparency. I know there's not going to be a give and take. There's the two million dollars that went here and was spent over here, and people are worried that that might mean two million dollars or less, uh, in the building fund. So I've a couple of questions that I hope you can answer very transparently, maybe not tonight, because there's not give and take. One is, I'd like to know how much interest has been garnered from the hundred and two million dollars that are sitting in the bank? Because I'm guessing that that's a lot of interest, which will cut back against that two million dollars. And I'd also like to know how much the contingency fund was, because every building project, even though I know nothing about building, always has a contingency fund. So I am guessing that between the interest and the contingency fund, you're probably actually still in the black on the building, and you won't know whether you're going to be in the black or the red until the building is done at the end of the two thousand eighteen fiscal year. And my ultimate guess is that you aren't going to let it go in the red, because you're looking at things like loading dock and other. That said, the bottom line is this, I'd love to know, and the community would like to know, the interest you've made and how much you're calculating will probably make to the, the end of the year or the two years, and how much that contingency fund is. Because I'm guessing it means everything's a lot better than the doomsday that we were all thinking. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, sorry. My name is Deb Kraus. Parents, I've had kids in the school district for over twenty-two years. Um, Tim just made me think of a question. I know nothing about the, the budget, uh, um, calculations or anything, but I did think about why was the two million moved over there in the first place? I see a hundred and two million dollar, but whatever, but, but I know you can't respond. Um, I want to go back kind of towards the beginning of the meeting. I just jotted down some ideas. It said, I have my last two, uh, going to have a senior and a tenth grader coming up in the fall, and, uh, my senior is well on his way to a great career. He is probably going to be, I don't know if it's going to be computer programming or something like that, but he's been in all the AP, CIS, all those kind of classes. My daughter will be a freshman, also wonderful, wonderful. The teachers have been awesome. I mean, for twenty-two years, I can say, I've never really had an experience with a bad teacher here. The programs have done nothing but get better year after year after year. My oldest daughter, she's thirty-three or four or whatever, you know, she had, um, high potential math or something like that, and that was about it. Now they have, my daughter, when she was a ninth grader, was taking classes over at the high school, uh, pre-calculus and all this kind of stuff. I think she's already got credits. So, all that being said, I have now my senior graduating this next year. How is the academy model going to be any better for my daughter or maybe her friends that are younger? I mean, what, um, you know, how do the academies provide more choice than the CACs, AP, CIS, Project LEADway, and all the other options that we have? Uh, my middle daughter graduated in two thousand twelve, she went through the, the nursing program, she does, uh, nursing work, she has for five years. I just don't, I don't know the cost, so that's been a real big, you know, thing to get in my head around is, is it worth it? Because I don't know the cost. I don't know what the price tag is, so, um, I really wish I had more time back. Was it a year and a half or two years ago? I was invited to come in and speak with the superintendent about some of my questions, but I had a stroke and then other stuff happened, and it just never, you know, never came about. Uh, so I just, I guess, um, I will go to, I will be at the high school for open house and for the question and answer time, but, um, I just like, I just, like I said, I'm seeing this, we have great schools, yes, we were like forty-third in the state or whatever, but there's a lot of crap going on. I know, I hear it from the kids, I hear it from the friends, how much tension they could feel, how much the teachers were being pulled out of classes to work on the academy's curriculum. You know, is that going to continue this next year? Are they going to be losing instruction time because the regular teacher is out writing whatever, whatever they've been doing? So, um, you know, if you could maybe kind of look at this, I mean, the cost, I just don't know why getting our class sizes backed down would be more beneficial at this point than just kind of moving ahead with the, the, um, whatever, the ambassadors and the, the whole bit. So I just wish that the board and the superintendent, and thank you, I didn't get to shake your hand yet, um, would kind of like revisit that, that it's not, you know, a brick and mortar footprint that's already in place, it's just, um, a conception. So, I mean, maybe we can find some dollars there, at least in the meantime, and, uh, I appreciate it. I went over two minutes and I'm pulling out of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Sogea, two fifth in the district. And hearing tonight, what I'm hearing, I'm hopeful, but as far as transparency, so does that mean monthly financials are going to be published from now on? Every change order in the past is going to be posted, because what I'm seeing here, and I drive up right about referendum time, there's about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars on account for, and I have no idea what the change order is for. The other thing, are we looking at consulting contracts? For instance, Mr. Bowerman, you recorded that SMS that the, uh, community forum get forty-three thousand, something like that, through the fiscal year of twenty, twenty eighteen? Excuse me? But all of a sudden, their rate went up to sixty-two fifty per month, seventy-one percent in two months. What's that all about? What warranted that? You guys need to start looking at everything throughout the board. Thank you.
Is this the entire or a personal comment on something that was already on the agenda? Or is that a different part of the meeting?
Yeah?
Yeah, go ahead.
Matt Lehman, Shakopee City Councilmember, lay it out to the spirit here. My only, uh, question on tonight's meeting, and just for the record, I typically don't get involved in this school district's stuff, because you guys are lucky to do that, but under the P card usage, it was talked about a shared usage, um, and my thought there is the accountability piece. I'm just wondering if, if I have a credit card issue to me, and I borrow it to somebody else, and they do something with it, how do you tell who actually did something wrong? If it's anything that ever happened to them? So that just dawned on me, and that's just something to consider, to think about whenever you do your policy stuff. But thanks for all the work you do in the community, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You too.
Good evening. Jerry Ferris. It's nice to meet you, Dr. Enner.
Thank you.
We're actually excited to hear you talk about transparency and openness, I can't tell you. I've met several more of you recently. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Two things, one, I'm a high schooler, doesn't have a schedule yet. They were up in June, got recalled. Um, they're getting nervous. They said they were going to get on the first day of school. She's like, how are we supposed to, it's a new school, there's new places, how am I supposed to know I'm going to be if I'm getting at the first day of school? So I'm just saying, you need to look at that. Okay, but is, they're getting on the twenty second? The twenty second? Thank you. Twenty second, your kids will be getting there. They're really nervous. But, um, secondly, I would second the notion of, just in light of different investigations going on, that, um, all contracts made with outside folks should be reexamined. It seems that most of them, or a lot of them, are over budget, don't know why. But, I mean, there's speculation, you know, that the former administration, but anyway, I haven't looked at a lot of those. And, um, we look forward to hearing more about everything. I mean, it's better to get all of the warps out on the table and let it be foul or they may, rather than speculation run through the community and people not knowing what's going on. I mean, most of us understand the two million dollars came from the general fund, and it just kind of got put back into the general fund, but it was earmarked towards projects at the high school. So now we're looking at where are those projects going to be cut? And yet then we're still looking at our change orders in here. It's not balanced, you know, there's something, doesn't seem right, so... And then, Tony or Angela, if you at any time could explain to folks the difference between where they're going to get most of their information, because it's not here, it's at the learning session. Um, I think it would be beneficial for the community as a whole, and we'll see a lot more people heading up there and getting the information that they need. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Anybody else?
One more.
Change approval, it's been a little while. Just wanted to check in. Oh, there's been a lot of conversation about the two million dollars, but then a lot of, I guess some of my questions boil down to the oversight, the advisory positions that the board holds, whether it's the Bach Committee or the Finance Committee, or if it's a consultant that's brought in, kind of where does the buck stop? As well as the question of, um, the former administration or the previous administration, kind of where does some of the liability or the onus for the people in this room, like when does that kind of continue again so that the former administration, um, layoff kind of gets minimized some? Because there's, I think there's been plenty of opportunity and time for people to gather their arms around this, both in advance of the March twenty, four and a half hour session that we all got to sit through. Again, it was six million dollars in two thousand sixteen, it was four and a half million potential, reduced down quite a bit, two million dollars in a capital shift levy fund, capital, all that fun stuff. Where does the confidence in the ability of the people within the finance department, but then also the ability of the people within the finance committees really kind of take hold of you? And it's challenging, from my perspective, because I am in finance, to try to challenge people on the profit things. I come from a corporate world, profit, loss, red, black is really easy. You see the amount of times that the funds get shifted and moved, and within the budgets that you guys work with. I don't see a lot of clarity or transparency in what you do. I think it would be really easy to move to two million dollars and have nobody catch it, just by telling you. I don't see that there's the, that stranglehold around the systems, the processes, and everything else, and that's what's always challenging about this entire debacle, is that it was a constancy from the CPE audits from two thousand and twelve through to last year, that there was bad process, there was all of these different things. And what I'm hopeful is that the idea of that, the former administration is, the scapegoat is gone, you know? Burlager's gone, Rod's gone, there's so many people that are gone, Scott Hare's gone, there's so many people that are gone that had the best amount of inputs, but are they the only reason that these things happened? the only reason that these things happened? Curing that quickly is gonna help you all a lot. Understanding how to do that is gonna help you all a lot. Because right now, the idea that the finance committee didn't know that these things were going on, it's like, what's the point of having a committee if they don't know what's going on? That's really my concern and complaint is that the people that are supposed to be watching that and I was, didn't know where the hens were. They were just running around like crazy, allegedly. Or were they? I don't know that one. And I don't have confidence that the people who are watching over a hundred million dollars school budget each and every year, even if eighty-five percent of it goes to the teachers, that's still fifteen million dollars a year that gets spent on other stuff. Buildings, a hundred, two million dollars. A lot of money going into that thing. I don't care how much interest we make on the money. I guarantee you it's overspent right now. There's, the knee-jerk reaction was, we're gonna have to scale back somewhere because the, it's known, it's gonna run out of line. The average change orders that was brought up at the June meeting, somewhere between three and five, sometimes seven percent change orders. Well, a hundred million dollars, that's a, that's a lot of change orders. So, how, how do we cure in those things? How do we make sure that they don't happen? How do we make sure that ICS Consulting and WorldCon Architects are doing their jobs? They're really looking out for the district. I know they work with a lot of schools across the state of Minnesota, but how do they allow these things to be a part of the process too? Are they completely blameless in, in all of these things at the same time too? And so, I wanna make sure that we can cure the idea that the former administration is gonna be to blame, hey, we got six months, let's, let's just kick this down the road. That's, that's not the case. We gotta cure this quickly. So, I'm hopeful that, again, you guys, those are the things that you're addressing as you continue to, to work through this and just keep following.
My name's Tom Amundson and I'm a teacher in the district. I debated what I was gonna say here tonight, basically because I wasn't sure how to approach everything that we've gone through for last year. Honestly, from a teacher standpoint, okay? And, and really, last year was one of the hardest years I experienced as a teacher in this district. Because of everything that we went through, because of the mirror that this superintendent created for our lives. I'm not gonna put it all on him, I'm gonna put it all on the fact that he created this while as a district, we were going through all these new advances. We were going through this academy program that was, to me as a teacher, being in education for over twenty years, it was probably the most exciting initiative I've seen as a teacher. So, that piece for me is really important. The academies, I think, are something that the community needs to realize was far beyond one person's vision. There are a lot of other people that came into play with it and took it by the reins to go forward with it. That's the piece I would hate to see go out the window because of all the controversy of last year. The other piece that I'll speak to is I'm not at all a financial person. In fact, I have a P card that scares the hell out of me. All right? But, the fact of the matter is, on September fifth, my greatest concern is gonna be for my students when I walk into my classroom. And I think what I've been listening to tonight is a lot of rehashing of everything, all the awful things that we've experienced this year and in the past four or five years. We need to continue to move forward. I think the school board, and I've spoken to a couple of members of the school board, I think they have worked hard to try to readdress the nightmare that they themselves got into. I don't think there's one board member in here that ever imagined they would experience what they did this year, when they first had aspirations of running the school board. So, I would like everybody to just think about September fifth. I know it's really idyllic, but that's what I'm gonna do.
I'm Leah Boodya, seventeen ninety-eight Fox Run. First of all, Gary, welcome, congratulations. The whole city is excited to have you, honestly. So, thanks for taking on the challenge and being here.
Thank you, sir.
I wrote things down, I didn't know if I'm gonna speak or not, I decided to. I hate doing this because it doesn't seem much genuine, but these are my words and my thoughts, so I'm a brand-new baby, my brain's a laugh, so I'm just gonna make sure I say what I need to say and I don't go to baby talk and so on. So, here it is. The way I see it, so there are two main challenges that our district is facing that came to light since March. There was a cultural one and a financial one. The cultural challenge was really driven by the way that former superintendent treated, former superintendent treated many of the district teachers and staff, as well as misused the district's P card and ignored the policies. The financial challenge was driven by the former finance director, the major budget error, as well as many mistakes in the way P card policy and receipt reconciliation process were enforced. Now, none of them, those two people are not here anymore. We have a new superintendent and we have new finance director. In order to do things properly and bring the least amount of damage to the district, the school board has to be patient, and have to be patient, collect all of the relevant information and facts, comply with the data privacy rules, follow their lawyer's instructions and follow the police and FBI investigation guidelines and rules on what they can and cannot say. Please make sure to remember that next time you're tempted to say how school board is not being transparent and not listening. It is because of that patience and doing things properly, which yes, always takes more time, we're able to completely sever ties with the former superintendent for fifty thousand dollars, which had, which had things not been done properly, could have caused the district a few hundred thousand dollars and potentially long legal battle in court. For a school district that has a hundred million dollar budget and a major capital project like the high school expansion, it's not fast and easy to find any potential errors or mistakes or misallocations that were left by the former superintendent and finance director without those people communicating to the people that replaced them, like the new superintendent, like the new finance director. That communication, that transition, that usually happens at my job when I leave, that didn't happen, like what Scott referred to as the landmines. Luckily, we have a great superintendent and a great finance director that are already communicating better with the school board and telling them all of the things that they need to know and should be aware of, which hasn't always been, which hasn't been, which hasn't always happened previously. I am confident that the police and FBI investigation will uncover everything that needs to be uncovered and do the right thing. I am also confident in this school board, with a new leader at the helm, will do their very best to make the most of the situation that we're in and continue to make our schools the best that they can be. Let's not forget, our test scores in math and reading, as well as graduation rates, have been improving since 2011 consistently, this year being the exception, as we read in the paper recently, and also at a faster pace than the state average and any other comparable metro districts. Credit for this goes to the teachers that are teaching and taking care of our kids no matter what. The classes, programs, technology and activities that's available to our students now is on par with comparable districts in the metro. This was not the case six-plus years ago. There was an intentional effort to offer all of these classes and programs and technology and activities. There was an intent and an effort in order for that to happen, for that to be available. Sorry, you know, this is a little long, but just, just a minute. Although I don't know majority of the teachers in our district, I know mostly the ones from Eagle Creek where my kids go, I am absolutely positive that they want a positive and supportive atmosphere as they're preparing to get into the next school year, next month. Our kids want to be in schools with positive and supportive atmosphere and happy teachers. Teachers and many of the, teachers and many of the older kids are on social media, they read and listen, they take notice on everything that's said and done. No matter how great our teachers are and how wonderful a job they're doing, they're just people, just humans like all of us. The consistent negativity, attacks and bitterness is taking a toll on their morale and psyche, I'm sure. We ended last school year on a pretty negative note and a, pretty negative note and, and with a big dark cloud over our district. Although that cloud will still linger and be around for some time, there is no reason to continue down the path, that path, over down the path, some of the people have been going. So, next time you're thinking about saying, posting or commenting about something, please think twice if what you're putting out there into the world and into the eyes and ears of the students and teachers will have a positive motivating and uplifting impact on them or the opposite. Will it help build things up or tear things down? We are all responsible for our own words and actions and the effects that those have. Two more paragraphs. We have, we have new leaders ready to take on the challenges and most importantly, teachers and staff ready to give their all every day in the classrooms for our kids. I hope you choose to be positive, stay positive, support our schools and watch as the dark cloud over time gets replaced by beautiful sunshine and blue skies. Thank you.
Tim Johnson has left the room, so I think we're done. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, appreciate it. We know not documented a lot of these. Okay, move on to item number twelve, which is upcoming meetings and important dates. BAC will be taking a high school tour on Wednesday and there may be potentially a quorum of the board because some folks have shown an interest in wanting to join us, please do. Do have bond oversight committee meeting again on August thirtieth. District Back to School Day is August thirty-first, first. We have another board meeting on September eleventh and then September twelfth, CPAC.
Is it the thirtieth bond oversight? Yes, okay.
I don't know that we ever got that confirmed.
I think there's still some confusion, yes, I agree.
I think we figured out.
It happened in the one previous, Angela. I think Chris Seymour took it off the list.
So, it's off of our that list, not off of theirs.
And then it's on, yeah. Then it's on calendar.
So, let's straighten, let's go ahead and just put a little line through August thirtieth because I think I've had a BAC meeting. Okay. Well, we got some more stuff in September, what's up, school guys today? All right, let's move on to item thirteen, I'd like to entertain, what's your opinion? Angela and Tony, any discussion? All those with favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Closest time, we are adjourned.